Let's see. Mr. Ortiz, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so the first order of business for us today is to vote for a new chair. As everyone's aware, Mr. Kendig, our former chair, had to resign, and so his spot hasn't been filled yet, and so we need to elect a new chair of this body. Do we have any nominations for chair?
I'd like to nominate CJ Cohn.
Thank you. And...
Commissioner Scoggins would like to nominate CJ Cohn.
And Commissioner Cohn, do you accept this nomination?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much. And do we need a formal...
Okay, I'm going to do our roll call vote. Commissioner Glenn?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Cohn?
Yes.
Commissioner Scoggan?
Yes.
Thank you. Everyone is approved.
At this point, I'm going to turn over the gavel to the new chair, Commissioner Cohn.
Okay. We're going to go through the minutes, the regular meeting minutes of May 1st, 2023. An introduction to public hearing quasi-judicial matters. There are none. Introduction to public hearing legislative matters. The Alaska Historical Commission serves as the geographic names board for the state of Alaska. The commission reviews names proposed for lakes, streams, mountains, and other physical features in the state. The commission has requested comments from the borough on the proposed names. MSB 15.04.025 requires the planning commission to hold a public hearing concerning the proposed names. After the public hearing, staff will provide the planning commission resolution to the state of Alaska Office of History and Archaeology, which will present all comments to the commission. Resolution 23-14 Coffee Spire Geographic Naming 33-North 07-West 17. Public Hearing June 15, 2023. Staff Peggy Horton. Resolution 23-15 Mocha Spire Geographic Naming 33-North 07-West 20. Public Hearing June 5, 2023. Staff Peggy Horton. Resolution 23-16 Langman Lake Geographic Naming 20-North 07-West 02 and 21-North 07-West 36. Public Hearing June 5, 2023. Staff Peggy Horton. Resolution 23-17, and I will do the best I can on the name. Nat-Sayet-I graphic renaming from Lion Head 20-North 10, East 32 and 33. Public Hearing June 5, 2023. Staff Peggy Horton. Resolution 23-18 Feather Lake Geographic Naming 17-North 03-West 07 and 17-North 04-West 12 and 13. Public Hearing June 5, 2023. Staff Peggy Horton. Resolution 21, I'm sorry, Resolution 23-21. A resolution of the Matanuska Susitna Planning Commission recommending the Matanuska Susitna Borough Assembly approve an ordinance exempting remote areas of the borough from the requirements of MSB 8.55 Special Events. Public Hearing June 5, 2023. Staff Jason Ortiz Development Service Manager. Resolution 23-22. A resolution of the Matanuska Susitna Planning Commission recommending approval of the ordinance of the Matanuska Susitna Borough Assembly amending MSB 17.55 to allow structures to be constructed within 75 feet of a water body, so long as certain engineering standards to protect water quality are applied. Public Hearing June 5, 2023. Staff Alex Strawn Planning and Land Use Director. Resolution 23-23. A resolution of the Matanuska Susitna Planning Commission recommending the Matanuska Susitna Borough Assembly adoption of amending MSB Title 17 zoning adding a chapter 17.11 sex offenders to prohibit registered sex offenders from establishing permanent residents within 1,000 feet of schools, daycare facilities, and public parks after the effective date of this ordinance. Public Hearing June 5, 2023. Staff Alex Strawn Planning and Land Use Director. Any objection to approving the consent agenda is written. Hearing and seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. Community reports, there are none. Agency and staff reports. We have one staff report. Go ahead.
This is Jason Ortiz, Development Services Manager for the Matu Borough. It looks like today we have Kelsey Anderson Planner 3 doing the, presenting the Boroughwide Comprehensive Plan Update. And your presentation that you sent did not come, well, not open, it keeps airing out, so I'm going to use the PDF document.
All right. Kelsey Anderson, Matu Borough Planner and the Project Manager for the Boroughwide Comprehensive Plan Update. So I've been on this for, since basically October. So we are at a point where we kind of have some things to report. So this PowerPoint that you, that we're going to go through is basically that. We're gonna, and you can go to the next slide. The outline is a little bit of why the comprehensive plan exists, why the planning commission exists. And so that's kind of Comp Plan 101. The new approach is going to cover kind of the newer additions that we're going to be bringing into the comprehensive plan update process. First steps is going to cover what I've been doing since October, and then future engagement for both the public, as well as how I plan to incorporate you into this planning process over the next couple of years. So I don't know if you know this or not, but the planning commission actually does play a really large role in comprehensive planning. So every second-class borough, which is what we are, is required by state statute to first create a planning commission. Well, obviously, we've done that already. The second piece then is to have the planning commission prepare a comprehensive plan, and this is from state statute, for the systematic and organized development of the borough. I am not particularly sure if those are the two adjectives I would use for the way that we've developed in the borough, but that's what state statute says that we are supposed to look out for and guide. So that's that organized development piece, that the comprehensive plan is really the backbone for decision-makers, policymakers, and the borough as an organization to make sure that we are guiding land use and promoting economic development in a way that promotes compatible uses and really protects the quality of life that people continue to live here and move here for. And then third is kind of the implementation piece of comprehensive planning, which is it is then the duty of the planning commission with help of staff and support of staff to bring this comprehensive plan to the assembly for adoption, and then further implementation through adopting ordinances and things like that for land use regulations, for economic development incentives, and things like that, that kind of support all of the overall goals and the vision of the comprehensive plan. Next slide, please. So what does a comprehensive plan cover? I found this quote, I think it actually really sums it up nicely, in that "community planning is the process of coming together to agree on a future direction, and then gathering momentum through the public process to actually carry it out and to move it forward." And so comprehensive plans in general span about a 20-year planning horizon. We have some smaller specialty plans that are much more detail-focused and that are like one-to-five-year plans. But this really is meant to be, like I said, that overarching guiding document that's going to help us get from one point to the next farther down the line. And it's supposed to outlive assembly terms, planning commission terms. It's supposed to really represent who the borough is and the goals that residents want and that the organization wants. It is community-developed with a focus on a common vision. So the public outreach for comprehensive plans is extensive. That's why the process takes years to do. I mean, I don't really foresee this plan coming to you as a finalized document until probably early 2025 because of all the outreach that we are required to do and that we want to do. It identifies goals and strategies to manage growth, promote economic development, and protect the quality of life of all Matu Borough residents. And then provides an implementation plan and an evaluation process. That last one, we haven't really done right at the borough so far with our comprehensive plans. So that's something that I in particular am going to focus on a lot in this, in this update. And we'll kind of go into what that looks like later in this presentation. But we need a process to evaluate how the borough is doing at following the vision and the goals and the strategies that residents helped us create. I think that's an integral part to make sure that we're actually representing the people who are voting us in, who are paying our salaries. So that's going to be a big part in the update. Okay, so just a little bit about the type of comp plans that we've had. So 1970 was when we adopted our first one. The borough population was a little bit under 8,000 people with a primary economy of agriculture. As you can see, we've grown a lot, we've changed a lot. So the last update was done in 2005, so we're coming up on about 20 years, which is that planning horizon. There were about 75,000 people, and the main economic drivers were retail, finance, and real estate services at that time. So jump forward to about 20 years later, we're at 114,000 people with our economy being driven mostly by healthcare, tourism, real estate. And I put the question marks because right now we do have kind of a lot of questions happening with, we have some larger manufacturing people who are looking to the borough to invest in us, but they haven't invested yet. There's kind of a lot of what-ifs with development at the port, the Westusitna Access Road. All these different really big projects are going to most likely make us have to amend the comp plan here in about five years, once some of these really get decided on and the drivers start happening. But we don't fully know yet, and that's part of the comprehensive plan process, is figuring out what these economic drivers are now and where people are wanting us to go with them. So I've been doing a lot of public outreach already, I've been going to a lot of the community councils. And one of the things that I like to point out to people and that has seemed to really resonate is that we are, at this point in our division, we are reacting to previous decisions made regarding land use and planning while also developing new programs and coming up with new policies and doing new planning work. So there's a lot of, it's a big balancing act right now, and you are all seeing it too with the decisions that you're having to make too with your CUP processes and things like that, and a lot of the legislative things that we're seeing regarding land use. The things that we're noticing, though, is that Alaska, or I mean, the Matu Borough continues to focus primarily on housing. Because 37% of our workforce is still working outside of the borough, it was actually a state economist that said the Matu Borough's number-one export is housing. We would really like to see that change, and I think all of us would like to see that change. So we need to come up with different, different approaches because the way that we're doing things right now has been leading us down this path for a long time. So the comp plan is a really great opportunity to look at what can the borough do differently with its internal policies and procedures, but also what can we recommend for our elected governing body to do differently? Like I said, the population will continue to increase. We're looking at about 150,000 by 2024, which is going to be kind of the planning horizon for the comp plan. Where are they going to go? What kind of services are they going to need? What are their expectations of local government? This is our time now to start planning for those questions. Yeah, so just to point out, like, something else I've been hearing a lot about is affordable housing. A lot of community councils have brought up that it's just difficult to, I mean, this is more of a rural problem, like Talkeetna, Sutton, Chickaloon are the ones that come to mind that have brought it up. But affordable housing is just really difficult, year-round affordable housing. They don't know how to promote that, they don't know what the borough's role is. And I said, we actually kind of don't know what the borough's role is in affordable housing. But it is something that is a good question for us as planners and you all as planning commissioners to be thinking through to see what kind of solutions the borough might be able to provide in public-private partnerships, supporting utilities, that kind of thing. Because residents are feeling a lot of growing pains right now, and we're seeing it with packed assembly chambers and packed planning commission meetings. Land use conflicts are really personal to people, and they come up when things try to, when things are happening in their neighborhoods and they feel left out of the public process and all of that. Like, we have a great opportunity right now to really listen to residents, figure out what they're looking for, and we're going to use the comp plan for that. So good, it's scrolling with me. We're like simpatico. Okay, so the new approach. The first thing that really stood out to me with how I wanted to approach this differently than we have in the past is I kind of did a deep dive into the Assembly's strategic plan. And so the Assembly adopts a strategic plan and then has about a five-year timeframe to meet its goals and strategies that are within that plan. And while updating the comprehensive plan was a goal of managing growth effectively, I didn't really see any other ties being made to the overarching goals of the comp plan. So one thing that I would really like to do in this is use the Assembly's strategic plan, this kind of very narrow-visioned, five-year strategic document, to implement the comprehensive plan. It seems to me that the goals and the visions of the overarching community should be reflected through the daily decisions and the weekly decisions that our elected body makes and these things that they're promoting. So, and I was able to present at the Assembly Strategic Planning Meeting in March and kind of went over some of these ideas and these basics. And it was really well-received in the sense that they want to make sure that they're representing who's voting them in. And the comp plan is just the right tool to do that. So some of their goals really are the same that you're going to see in the comp plan, which is promoting economic development, delivering high-quality services, and managing growth. They're the same or similar because that's the goal of every local government. Like, we're all just trying in the ways that we, that makes sense for us with the powers that we have to manage growth effectively and to promote economic development and to deliver the highest quality of services that we're able to with the amount of revenue that we take in. So the next one is something that I don't think the borough has done before. But I'm really excited about it because I do think that it will lay a fantastic foundation for the comprehensive plan, and that is a land use fiscal analysis. So understanding how land is being used, what type of revenue that's bringing in for the local government, the type of services that are expected of us from that development, and then also looking forward into the future with future liabilities like road maintenance and different improvements to public facilities, things like that, and the projected services that are going to come with the type of development that we have, which is kind of this sporadic sprawling development. Well, that comes with a cost too. Like, not having any land use regulations or any rules also carries a cost. And so we need to figure out what that cost is. The way that I think about it is like, there's budgeting. You know, the borough does a great job of balancing its budget, of spending within its means, of making sure that everything checks out, and we're really not overextending our pocketbook. That's kind of the same as making sure that every month your mortgage is paid, your kids are in the sports, and all that's paid, your lights are on. But it's a totally different mindset for planning for retirement or putting money away for future use. And so fiscal land use analysis, that's what that is meant to do. It's meant to help us make sure that the decisions we're making now are penciling out for the type of future that we want to have, and nobody is left holding the bag that doesn't want to be. So the goal really is with that is understanding what our development pattern is costing taxpayers and then how to budget for projected maintenance for borough facilities, infrastructure, things like that. And so with the, with that, we are, I wrote up a scope of work. We're going to bring in outside help for that, so there's going to be a consultant on board for that fiscal analysis piece. So, and then the final piece of this new approach is an implementable plan. We need something that people can, like, us as department employees can look at and say, "How is our work reflected in the vision and the values of our community? What are we doing on a day-to-day basis for increasing our efficiency, our effectiveness, and delivering high-quality services?" I want to, I want to work hard through the comp plan process to figure out ways to just be a better government and provide better services. So that's one thing we're going to look at. Moving past just this kind of visions and values, this is that kind of document. I want it to be something that you all can easily reference when you're making really tough decisions about land use. And you can say, "I wonder if there's anything in the comp plan about how this decision should be made or what makes the most sense for a type of community like this that's in a rural area that doesn't have a lot of population but really wants to hold on to like a certain quality of life that they have." You, like, it seems to me that that's a document that's just kind of missing right now. We don't have something that really represents who we are as a community. So that is the major part of just making it an implementable plan. We're almost done, guys. So analysis, so since October, like I said, I popped into this new position of being the project manager for the comp plan. I have gone forensic on the current, the 2005 comp plan, on all of the community comprehensive plans, of which there are 16 plus the three cities, so 19. Trying to find themes, trying to figure out what is it that people have wanted for a long time and that we might not have been able to give to them or do for them. And then looking at like best practices throughout Alaska, national examples of implementable plans. And then learning about fiscal analyses and diving into the Assembly's strategic goals. So those are primarily where I'm getting the information for the comp plan and what's kind of driving the process right now. Yeah. So I have also been attending community council meetings. I don't know, I've probably done 12 so far with another however many left to do an introduction in, for the comp plan and to just kind of have these initial conversations about, kind of like this, like, what is the point of local government? Why do we plan? What can it do for you? Why should you be involved in the process? And something that I've been bringing along with me is this Venn diagram to just talk about trade-offs and talk about expectations around government services. Because the three things that we hear most from people is that they want to keep their taxes low. They want to continue to have their low-density housing sprawled out to kind of wherever. They want to be able to live at the end of the road and still then have an ambulance show up when they want, like, when they need it to show up. Having those high-quality services, like knowing when the school bus is going to come or that a school bus is going to come at all. So, but there are trade-offs, like that middle part says, "Does this exist?" I don't know that it does. I don't know that we can continue to develop in the same manner that we have in the sprawling, kind of sporadic pattern, while maintaining low taxes and then continuing to also deliver high-quality services. So those are all questions that I'm trying to figure out in the comp plan because that seems like the right place. And so we're having conversations about willingness to pay and about, just like I said, like, expectations of local government. And it's been fascinating, like, I've been hearing a lot of stories, some great, some bad. A lot of it is, and Tim Hale said this at the Chickaloon meeting I was at last week, but everybody wants small government until a pig farm moves in next door, right? So that is where we're kind of at as a community, where there are so many people coming in and there's so many different types of development to happen. Are we actually doing our job as a local government and guiding growth in a way that promotes economic development if we don't really have a lot of rules around what happens? So the conversations have been fascinating, they've been rowdy, and I'm just really looking forward to continuing to be out in the community, having these conversations. People are very engaged right now, they're watching all of us very closely. They're tuning into meetings on Facebook or they're showing up. So that part is just all great. The next slide. So I do need some help, though, I need a lot of help. But I'm looking to build two teams right now. The first is going to be an internal technical committee. And really what that means is how I spoke earlier about wanting to do a deep dive into the borough to figure out how we can operate more smoothly, how we can just promote the overarching goals of the comp plan and all that. That's what the internal technical committee is going to be helping me figure out, is how can we start doing better as a government to meet all the needs and expectations of our residents? And they're also going to be in the weeds with me in the planning documents and helping out with public meetings and all that kind of stuff. So the external steering committee, this is where our external experts get to come to the table. Like, I am not an economic development expert, I'm not an affordable housing expert or a public utilities expert, like, I need those people on the team. So we're looking out into the community to see who can kind of represent some of these voices to help us make an implementable plan that has actions that can like bring in private and public partnerships to just do better work. And so that's what the external steering committee is going to be. I would love a member of the planning commission to be on that. I've also asked assembly members, if anybody is interested on that, to represent it. It's going to be about 12 members, representing, like I said, different kind of groups, stakeholder groups like that, and then just some people representing different regions of the Matu Borough to make sure that it is of equal representation for who we are as a community. Next slide, please. You have one more handout, this nice little roadmap here, or maybe it's not there, but it's out there. Basically, I just made this so that you all and the public have a general idea of the type of involvement and engagement that we're going to be doing for the rest of 2023. Like I said, this is a Like I said, this is a long process, so we are just at the beginning, trying to gather enough information to actually be able to hold a meeting and have something for people to chew on and think through and help us figure out. So, right now I'm creating those committees we talked about on the last slide, and we're going to kind of do a community survey, stakeholder surveys, things like that, and then later, probably around October, we're going to do some public forums, some workshops with the public. And, I think this is the second to last, yeah. And then for you all, so there's really two options as far as kind of team involvement, which is first, the work session. So, Jason and Carol and, and I and some, and Kreen are working on just planning commission trainings in general. Comp plan is a natural fit since, like I said, like you all are the keepers of the comp plan for the Matu Borough. So, we'll be doing some workshops and kind of things like that throughout this time period, but definitely we'll at least get one in this year. The next is joint meetings. I imagine at this point, since we are really rolling now with the comp plan, that I'll just kind of have a standing update at the Joint Planning Commission Assembly meetings to just keep you apprised of what's going on. It is a long process, but it's also quick in the fact that there's just a lot of moving pieces all the time. So, there will definitely be room for update in October and then again in March. And a quick reminder, just if you do plan on attending public meetings that we have, of which I would gladly welcome anybody to be a part of, just let me know if you're going to attend or plan to attend, so I know if there's going to be a quorum and I can advertise in the appropriate amount of time. We did it. Thank you, guys. I will take any questions that you have.
I just comment, on the housing, there's 37% of the residents work outside, and I don't doubt that, but bear in mind that, you know, like military, those jobs aren't going to come here, and then the oil field job may not come to the valley, right? I don't see fields, but just, those people are always going to be here, you know, but they'll have to always work out, you know what I'm saying? I don't think you're going to, you may shrink that number by bringing just more people in, but you're always going to have, you know, this, I don't think that's a shocking number to me, because those people can't live in Prudhoe Bay and the military people would rather be here than, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, there's only, sorry.
No.
Through the chair, there's only 4% of Matu Borough residents that work on the slope. There's about 30% that commute to Anchorage every day.
Is that, do you know the breakdown between the military?
I don't.
I'm just, I'm just curious, I know there's a lot of military, and then, then sometimes, and I don't know, you, you know more about the community council, just always bear in mind that sometimes that's just a small group of people and the communities aren't that engaged, so that opinion, well, it's certainly, it's got value, but just bear in mind, that's not always, that's 12 people sometimes, you know, or less, or, but I just, I've watched, I've seen the community council meetings go from just a little group of people make a big decision, and then 200 or 300 people in a gymnasium screaming, yelling, and the troopers are there, so keep that in mind, you know, but no, it's a great report, thanks.
Thanks.
Are there any, any other questions? All right, thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you.
Okay. There are no land use classifications, so now we will open up to audience participation. There will be three minutes per person for items not scheduled for public hearing. At this time, members of the audience may speak regarding any topic that is not on the agenda for the public hearing. There will be three minutes per person for any topic not scheduled for the public hearing tonight. Is there anyone? Go ahead and come on up. Please state your name, your full name, spell your last name for the record.
Give me, give me just one moment, sorry.
Wow, this is going to be an interesting takeoff after the last speaker or planner. Hi, my name's Gene Holt, and I-
Gene, can you, can you hold on just one second?
Yeah.
We're getting the clock up. Hold on just a minute.
Three minutes?
There'll be three minutes, yeah.
Okay.
We'll make sure you get your full time.
No, that's okay.
And when you, before you start, if you go ahead and spell your last name for me, that'd be really helpful. Thank you so much.
May I start?
Go ahead, you may start.
Yes, ma'am. Hello, my name's Gene Holt, H-O-L-T, and I don't really call this a pleasure coming here, but I appreciate being with you all. I'm, I'm kind of revealing my soul to you guys as far as commissioners tonight. It's kind of a different take. I know you're in a hard decision of what, you know, you, you volunteer for this position. I respect the planning commission over the years and everything like that, and you have a lot of hard stuff before you. I like to give a little insight, it's pertaining to water body setbacks, and I've been involved for 37 years. That's a long time. I didn't bring my little visual tonight that sat deep, but I'm, I'm pretty upset with the setback issue and the, the planning department in the last few years, the planning department, not the planning commission. And this is the only setback we, regulation we have, is the water body setback. And, you know, there, your guys are coming up with a new comprehensive plan, whatever, the setback issue has been on the books for 50 years. And now, tonight, you got introduced to the third revision, because you all saw, had some insight of, you know, what they presented to you from the planning department. And so now we're in the third revision, which is, is even more regressive than the other two. And this is our planning director. He's the one in charge of this. And I'm flabbergasted. And good example is what took place, I believe I mentioned it before, two, two years ago when there was a variance. This is opening a whole can of worms, this, this, what's taking place now, but it started, oh hell, it started with a variance that the planning department granted. It, and the commissioners gave 6 to 0 vote, they disapproved it. And then the appellant brought it and it passed through, I believe, the Assembly, then it went to two Board of Appeals. The next step is we were going to have to hire a lawyer or a Superior Court judge. So, I'm putting a lot of blame on the planning department on what's taking place here, and, and I think that you need a more co-compliance.
Please, please finish up.
I think that the, the planning department needs to make some improvements.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I have a list of names of those who signed in to testify, and I'm assuming that they're not here, I will go through the list of names. Sid Hill. Ron Stokes. Mel Stokes. Denise Dotson. Kathy Clements. Okay. Okay.
Madam Chair, this is Jason Ortiz, Development Services Manager. Caleb, do we have anyone online?
Thank you.
That is a no, so it doesn't appear we have anyone online.
Okay. And we are moving to the public hearing legislative matters. Okay, Resolution 23-13, a resolution of the Matanuska Susitna Borough Planning Commission recommending the Matanuska Susitna Borough Assembly adopt and fund a transportation infrastructure program for 2023. Staff Brad Swartz, Pre-Design and Engineering Division Manager. Mr. Swartz, would you proceed?
Good evening. I thought I'd give you a little bit of history on the project first and then run into what the status is. Be using a couple of handouts that were in your packet. One is the timeline, looks like this, and then, then the list of projects, which is kind of in an Excel spreadsheet that looks green band at the top. So first, a little bit of history. The Transportation Improvement Program is linked directly to the Long Range Transportation Program, or to the Long Range Transportation Plan, and that calls for a Transportation Improvement Program list or package about every, every other year. In the past, we've done those in 2011, 2013, 2018, and 2021, that were brought to the voters and they passed. So our intention is to try to do that again with this current package. And then the status of the package, so in 2022, the Assembly directed, directed the Borough Manager to create a Transportation Improvement Program that would, that we could take to the voters in November of, of 2023, this fall. And then he, in turn, the Borough Manager in turn, gave direction to the Department of Public Works to carry that out. We started in December of '22, it was assigned to the Preliminary Design and Engineering Division, and we made a call for nominations. We reviewed the Borough Long Range Transportation Plan and selected projects that hadn't been completed yet from a list of the short, medium, and long-term projects. Then we reached out to the Borough Departments and RSA Boards, the Transportation Advisory Board, I think we even reached out to you folks, and, and also the Assembly in an early notice to see if there was any projects that you wanted nominated. In the end, we ended up with a list of about 30-plus some projects, and then in January of 2023, we carried out a screening process that determined if the projects met criteria such as, does the road, do the roads have a functional classification of collector or higher? Does the project make transportation, the transportation system safer? Does the project have public support? Some of these, some of, some of the projects on the list came from prior bond packages where not all the projects were constructed, so they were, so they'd already been voted on and passed by the voters. Other criteria were, has the project been started and has some of the development already taken place, like design or right-of-way acquisition or utility relocation? Does the project support economic vitality? And another example would be, does the project improve connectivity between the, in, in the road system? Then in January, we also formed a scoring committee that was made up of the Public Works Director, School District Representatives, Community Development Staff, the Planning Director, Emergency Services Deputy Director, and an engineer from the Preliminary Design and Engineering Division. We created a scoring matrix that was based on other local government and MPO programs that were similar to, to what we have here in the, in the Borough. And then the results of the scoring was a prioritized project list. Some, some of the subtypes were not scored because they didn't fit well within the road criteria process. Some of those were bike and pedestrian facilities, bridges, parks and rec facility access, school access, and transit. Then on February 17th of 2023, the Transportation Advisory Board was, was briefed on the TIP 23 package, and it was decided, since they still had two vacant positions open, we would come back for a, a resolution later in March, which we did. And then on March 31st of 2023, the Transportation Advisory Board passed a resolution of support. Also in March, we began developing cost estimates, which the Assembly had asked for, and, and those cost estimates will, should be available in June when they have their meeting. In April, we included a TIP 23 package in the Planning Commission's agenda for tonight. So, just, and I'd also like to bring you up to date on the list, which is in your packet. There's been a few changes. We had a meeting with DOT to let them know of projects on our list that might occur within their right-of-way, and one of them was the, was a pedestrian crossing on Arctic Avenue here in Palmer. It's kind of the beginning of the Old Glen Highway. And DOT mentioned to us that the traffic volumes on the Old Glen and, and Arctic Avenue are becoming so high that they want to do a full-blown study of that whole corridor, and they said that they would take into consideration that there's need for pedestrians to cross, and they will include that in their study. So we removed it from our list. I think it's the first one under the bike and pedestrian subtype. The other change that occurred was we did receive a, a late nomination from the City of Houston. They requested that a, that we include a King Arthur Road upgrade, and that would just be, you know, doing any digouts that are needed, adding some wider shoulders, doing some repaving, and that type of thing. So, that would fill out our, our list from the cities. That's all I had for tonight. You have any questions?
I got a quick question for you. So, describe to me the scoring criteria here, so the hot, the higher, the highest number is the most, so you got the score and the priority here, so 79 would be a-
That was the highest.
That's the highest. What is, what is the highest number, 100?
It's possible, but, yeah.
So 79 would be high, and how, okay, I got you.
Yeah.
And it goes down to, in this list, we're down to what priority, so priority one would be?
Priority one would be the first, well, it would be the top scoring project, which is the Burma Road reconstruction.
And so priority 79 would be, would put that one out a little ways, is that correct?
79 just means that's the score for what that project got.
Okay.
So it scored higher than all the other road projects.
Okay, all right.
Mm-hmm.
Are there any other questions?
Who, is it, is this a public scoring process, or?
It's a, it's a departmental scoring process.
Within, within your own-
But we-
I'm just curious, like Burma Road, and then I like Inkstrom intersection, I just was, it just seemed like Burma, I'm, I'm, I think, I think it's a great idea to get ahead of Burma Road because, but I just think to see some of these are kind of nightmare intersections, but-
Yeah, it, Burma scored highest because it's been supported by the Assembly for, for the Borough. It's been on lists for a long, long time, so they've had some development there. We, we have bought, it had a preliminary design already completed back in the 80s and 90s, and then DOT came in and looked at it, because they were very interested in a connection between the Big Lake area and the port, and then, and then following that, well, and then for many years, the Borough began purchasing right-of-way for the, for the project, and we have, I think, 2/3 of the right-of-way already completed, so. the project, and we have, I think, 2/3 of the right-of-way already completed, so.
I, I just, last year I was actually up by Goose Bay working, and there's a culvert and failed, and you, yeah, drive all the way around Burma Road, it's, it's, it's-
It's a pretty rough road.
It's a nice Sunday drive, but not a, not a, I just was just curious, yeah, I, I, yeah, to get out the port, I mean, I think it'd help the port a lot someday, and it's a good idea, I just, just wondering, like, like I said, some of these intersections I've driven through are pretty, pretty busy.
Yeah, I agree.
One more thing, the, in regard to the Old Glen, of course, that's my territory out there, it, it's bad, and the traffic is unreal on it, and I can't hardly believe what I'm looking at most days.
Yeah, DOT, DOT told us that the high traffic volumes start somewhere near Clark-Wolverine Road-
Yep.
And continue all the way into town.
It goes all the way to the bridge, and, you know, the bottom line is, is that we're way behind the power curve on our road transportation infrastructure, and we need to catch up, it's dangerous, so.
That's especially true with the DOT roads, I believe.
I agree with you, so, yeah, I'm in favor of doing what we got to do to get this road infrastructure up to speed and plan ahead, we need to look down the road here, because we have failed miserably at that. We should have secured a lot of right-of-way years ago, that we did not do, and it was, you know, $3,000, $4,000, $5,000 an acre, now it's $180,000 an acre, so, all right, appreciate it, thank you.
And I would, I would just echo, pardon me, what Commissioner Glenn had to say, just today, actually, this afternoon, on the Old Glen Highway, I saw a teenage girl about a foot away from getting run over by a motorcycle. I mean, a tragedy was this close from happening just this afternoon, so, I mean, something's got to be done there, I totally agree.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Swartz. I did not, I failed to close public testimony earlier, so at this time, I closed the public testimony, and I would like to open public testimony, public hearing on Resolution 23-13. Is there anyone who would like to testify for Resolution 23-13? Is there anyone online? Then I will close public testimony for the Resolution 23-13. Do you have any comments that you would like to make on the resolution? Yes, sorry.
This is Jason Ortiz, to the Madam Chair, no, I do not. Thank you.
Okay. The Chair will now entertain a motion for Resolution 23-13.
I make a motion to approve 23-13.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Glenn was the one who made the motion, and Commissioner Allen was the one who seconded. All right, discussion.
Like, Commissioner Glenn, in his comments, said it pretty clearly, this is something that, that needed to happen a long time ago.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none? Do we need to make a vote? Does it have to be, is it a voice vote, or how are we doing it?
I'll go ahead and do a roll call vote for you guys.
Okay. Are there any objections? Hearing and seeing none, we'll go ahead and do the vote.
Commissioner Glenn?
Yes.
Commissioner Cohen?
Yes.
Commissioner Skoggin?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
All in approval, it carries.
The motion passes as amended, or as it is written. Okay, we are now down to commission business. Mr. Ortiz, what, coming up on the Planning Commission agendas?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jason Ortiz, Development Services Manager. I had a few things here, so in your guys' packet on page 767 is all our future upcoming agenda, quasi-judicial and legislative matters, so go ahead and take a look at that, that was in your packet previously, and if, if there's any questions, make sure you guys reach out. I wanted to also thank our, our new Chair, thank you for stepping into that role, and thank you to Commissioner Allen, staying as a Vice Chair, thank you to, to Kelsey for doing a great job on our presentation tonight. I did also want to remind the audience about, sometimes, a lot of times, often you'll see different pieces of legislation or resolutions that are brought forth by the Planning Department. Be sure to take a look to see who is the sponsor, because it's not always the Planning Department that's bringing forth that, it's, it's at the request of a particular Assembly Member or wherever that is initiated, we're just the, the drafters on a lot of stuff. Quasi-judicial reminder, wanted to remind the, the Planning Commission as well about, about all the stuff coming up forward, if you have any objection, any, anything that you, that you think that you are tied to, to make sure that you let us know. Have a reminder for the audience, for people that are listening on Facebook Live or on YouTube, if you want to submit your comments, you can always email your comments in to MSB-planning commission@matsugov.us, and I believe that was all I had for new commission business and comments.
Thank you. Okay, so that brings us to Commissioner comments. So we will start with Commissioner Allen.
I would just want to say, Commissioner Cohen, thank you so much for stepping up to be Chair, and best of luck.
Commissioner Skoggin's?
Yeah, I don't, yes, thank you for being our Chair, no other comments.
And Commissioner Glenn?
Yeah, thank you for stepping up to the plate here, we look forward to torturing you here down the road, so.
That's good, I will give it the best shot that I have. All right, so at this time, this adjourns our meeting, so the meeting is adjourned at 7:01.